For Monday, June ninth, twenty twenty five. And I'll call to order this meeting. This meeting is being recorded. I almost always forget to say that. And if you are able, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So next up is our consent agenda. Typically, things are there that are expected to have low discussion, but we can certainly pull things out if there are any. I wanted to preemptively add, in case this addresses any concerns, that the student enrollment request from NAMNAS at Assistant Principal is a benefit that we offer all of our union employees. And so we have in the past had a request, a similar request from another principal at a different school, and also approved that. So there is also, we also have the DEI Committee co-chairs on Zoom if there are any questions about the DEI memo to appoint Lisa Kilpatrick to the DEI Committee. Was there any discussion or questions on the consent agenda?
Just went on point eight. If I can just clarify, is that similar that the name would be put into the lottery? And if pulled, that would become one of the?
No, not necessarily. Sometimes we will do that, but that it isn't an automatic.
Can we just clarify? Because you skipped a couple of words. The school choice lottery for the Assistant Principal student enrollment. Got it? Okay. And the answer was?
We don't necessarily do that automatically. I mean, I'll just say for one reason, the school choice, when a student is accepted into school choice, then they are allowed to be a member of school choice for their entire career. And so it isn't always the first thing that we do. When we look and you're correct that sometimes when we've looked at different staff, children, if there was an opening, then we would, we might put them in that grade level. But if there isn't necessarily an opening, we wouldn't necessarily put them in the lottery.
Thank you for that beat. So I was able to think about another point I wanted to make on an item in the consent agenda was the special education reserve transfers. You, if you remember from Jenny's last presentation to us about a budget update, there will also be a proposed withdrawal from that account. And that will be on our agenda for the tri board meeting on Thursday. So this tonight in the consent agenda is an acceptance of deposits, not a withdrawal. I also want to take a minute to think, to speak to the DEI appointment that's in the consent agenda. We did receive public comment about that. Like I said, we do have the co-chairs on Zoom. If anyone has questions about that process and about that appointment, there's a memo in our packet that explains some of that. And so if there are questions or feedback concerns, you can speak up. We can vote as a whole or pull something out. Anybody questions? Okay, I'll take a motion then.
So moved.
Second.
To approve the entire consent agenda. And Bill? Okay, all in favor? Seven zero, thanks. Okay, next up is public comment. A reminder that public comment for any item or topic on or off the agenda is always available near the top of the agenda for individuals to share their thoughts. Speakers will be limited to two minutes per person. Please use public comment even if you refer to something later on the agenda. Virtual public comment is available through Zoom. Raise your hand and you'll be promoted to panelist and unmuted or in person at the microphone. Please start by introducing yourself and your address. We'll give that a minute.
Nobody online.
Oh, okay. Do you just want to introduce yourself for the record, Megan? Thanks.
Megan O'Connell, forty-four South Thompson Road. I just want to speak to the DEI appointment that was just voted on. And just to point out, I think you're all aware, I sent you a comment last week that it's unfortunate that the DEI Committee does the poorest job of vetting people that volunteer for the committee. Now, I submitted one of those forms, one of several people that did. Never got any response from either of the co-chairs, even when I reached out to them to volunteer to answer questions or have any conversation. And again, I think it's very unfortunate that the DEI Committee of all committees would move to recommend someone be seated, whether they're qualified or not, without talking with everyone interested. And I think it's a shame that the school committee just did the same. That's not what diversity, equity, inclusion is about. And I thought you all knew that. Thank you.
Thanks, Megan. Any hands on Zoom?
No.
Anyone else in the room? We've got a presenter. Okay. All right, we're going to move on to informational updates and start with our graduated student alumni graduate.
Graduate.
Go ahead, Daniel.
Yeah, so I don't have much as we're approaching the end of the school year. But we did have graduation yesterday and it was great seeing a lot of you guys there. So it's pretty nice. This week, we have junior sophomore in freshman awards where many students will be, I guess, celebrated. And I can't think of the word right now, but I guess just rewarded for their hard work. And also finals start this Friday with F and G block. Next Monday is E and D and Tuesday is C and B. And finally, Wednesday is A block final as well as the makeup. And then there's no school on Thursday. And then the last day of school, which is a half day, is on the twentieth. And then one last thing is that the WA Girls Lacrosse advanced from the Elite Eight to the Final Four. And they're going to be playing, I believe, Wellesley High School tomorrow.
Good luck to them.
Great. Thanks, Daniel. And updates from administration?
I met with Jeff Goodwin, our Director of Facilities, to try to figure out when we could establish that short window of time for those sustainability tours that we had talked about. And so I want to put these on your calendars and see if you have availability for Friday, June thirteenth from nine to eleven or Monday, June sixteenth from two to four. So those are the two windows. Our goal is if the weather is cooperating, we'd love to get you up on the roof at Blanchard and talk about Blanchard kind of being the main spot where Jeff wants to talk about a bunch of the different weatherization efforts that are taking place in multiple buildings, but he feels like he can talk about them at Blanchard. And then if we have time, we would go and visit WA to see the garden there and kind of talk about that. But that's kind of the focus. So if I'll send this to you in email too, but if you can put that on your calendar, if you're available, either one of those windows, one in the morning, one in the afternoon, hopefully that would kind of meet everybody's needs. And we'll do an interesting little facilities tour, especially of that really vast white roof as they prepare to see what it would look like with solar on it in the future, too.
Bring your sunglasses.
Bring your sunglasses. That's right, you've done this. Yeah, it is bright.
So everybody should just RSVP with their availability or interest. And we'll try to just have less than three or less members at a new time. Anything else? Okay. School committee updates.
I went to the Financial Literacy Fair that the Students Senate and the Rotary Club put on. I think Valerie made it too. That was excellent. I thought the kids were really engaged. The setup was fantastic. It was really organized. And I thought the Students Senate did a really great job with that. And I look forward to being able to volunteer there again next year.
Were you able to participate, Daniel?
Yes. I believe I saw one of you. No, I saw you.
I was in the morning session, so.
What was your reality check? Did you spin the wheel that was like surprises or something?
Yeah, I think I lost like ten grand.
It was just really, really well done because one of the spins of the wheel was like, you've been surprised with twins. If you have. If you have health insurance, it's this much. If you don't have health insurance, it's this much. And then I was at the clothing booth and someone came over and we were talking about how to make a budget for your clothing allowance based on your personal style and your career choice. And the individual said, you know, I think I would like to choose this, but my dog just fell down the stairs and it cost ten thousand dollars, which was something you spin on the sort of surprise wheel. So they had, it was really fun. Yeah.
I had the SRO was out like, I just spotted over. Handing out tickets, so they all got fined. So it was great. I thought the kids were really engaged and it was really well done.
Loads of fun, losing ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, but like, I mean, so they were like, I have to come back in other areas. And I was like, yep.
That's great.
Prepares you for life.
Any other updates along that way?
I just want to thank the administration for what I felt was really good communication and good decision making for the weekend, as much of a challenge as it was. Moving graduation to Sunday, it turned out to be one hundred percent the right choice. Yeah, and it was just well communicated. And it was better to not have it. Oh, we'll try it tomorrow. And, you know, it's just go right to the better, the best option, so.
That is a lot of stress for principals.
Yes.
He was, he was shouldering all of that. So yes, we appreciate all of the research he was doing and communication. He was in constant communication with meteorologists.
You have to have a degree of meteorology. When you become a principal.
And superintendent. So much for crisp updates. Anybody else? That's okay.
I know CPAC is here tonight and they might, but I'll still also put a reminder out that the CPAC are having a Parents Caregivers Night get together on Wednesday at Fuji at seven PM. Is it what, six? Six or seven, we'll double check.
Go at six, stay till?
Well, exactly. You can start early and stay late. But no, for anyone who hasn't come, it's a great opportunity to meet other parents and connect with them and ask questions and just find other families who may be in similar situations as you have. So it's a fun night.
Did you have an update?
Oh, just that the Westford community is invited to the second annual Juneteenth celebration on Thursday, June nineteenth at ten AM on the Town Common.
Yeah, I think it's going to be really cool because there's a flag raising, but then inside the PAC is a speaker and a reception. So that's at ten thirty. So it seems like really great. Yeah. I'll jump onto that and add that there is a Pride Month flag raising on Saturday, June twenty first at ten AM. I think there's more to that event or it takes, moves over to act in. So once I get those details from the DEI Committee, I'll share them. It was mentioned earlier, but it's worth repeating. There is a tri board meeting on Thursday, June twelfth in this room, also hybrid. For anyone who has wondered what the impacts of the override had failed override had been or how next year's budget is looking or how some of the work that's happening in the department's budget leveled conversations, that's the place to go and ask them. So if you've heard anybody ask you those questions, please remind them that showing up, asking those questions is important. And here is a great opportunity to do so with the, and for, if you don't know, the tri board means Finance Committee, School Committee, and Select Board all in one place. So one stop shopping for compliments or complaints. It's been a busy end of year. I was going to list these, but so just well done to all the organizers and the volunteers that helped make things like Adventure Days, WA Last Night, the Financial Literacy Fair. All of that happening is really great for our community. The senior capstone exhibit was also a lot of, a really great opportunity to walk around and get to know the seniors. And finally, I have a MSBA update from the Robinson School Building Committee. We had originally been so eager to get going and that our hope had been to get the requests for services, like the RFQ out and hire an OPM, maybe over the summer, start off the fall with some forums. However, we have been recently educated on the timeline that the MSBA follows. And the earliest at which we will be able to bring on an OPM is November or December.
You're joking.
I'm not joking. And that's only like the first step. And then we do a separate designer review panel to bring on the designer.
Because of all of the different applications that are going to them, it's first come, first served. And so even though we're following the projected timeline, they're like, oh, no, if you didn't have X done by a certain date, which is not mentioned on the timeline, so.
So it's not, it's not connected to, because I think we have to go upon their agenda.
Yeah, I mean, we can still meet all of the timelines that are, that are publicized. And they're still saying, oh, but that meeting agenda is full. So you now have to wait until the next or next two meetings in order to get your.
Yeah.
There's like a lag built into the system, I think. It's just that we weren't really aware of that. And so our enthusiasm was.
And I will say, I mean, again, we're following what the publicized dates are and what they showed us. We just didn't know that, oh, they only take so many things for each meeting, which means you get kicked to the next meeting.
So we think it's what, August?
The earliest, the earliest that would be November in which they would be reviewing for the OPM.
Our choice of OPM.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're, we're, our timeline is, you know, we're still anticipating the next week, the board will invite us and officially invite us into the feasibility process.
So we're on the June agenda for being invited in.
To the feasibility study, but then all these other steps.
And we can put our RFQ.
RFS.
Right, whichever the last initial letter is. So we can start that process, but we, but they have to also approve our OPM. And so the whole piece of it gets delayed.
Yeah, so a little disappointing. We'll keep everybody updated. Hopefully, just a little bit of a longer process means we can be a lot more thorough, thoughtful, maybe even still have some outreach or education as we go. So, okay. I think that's it, right? So we're going to move on to our business items and start with the CPAC Annual Survey Review. And we welcome up Chair, President, Chair? Chair of the CPAC, Melissa Mackey.
My co-chair right here.
Busy time of year.
Well, thank you for having me. I'm Melissa Mackey. I'm a parent here in the district and the chair for our CPAC. Not with me this evening is unfortunately, they couldn't make it Lisa Studer, who is the Vice Chair, and then Daniel Thompson, who is our Secretary Treasurer. And tonight, I'm here to talk about our annual parent caregiver survey. So this survey we've been doing for the last five years, we conduct it and analyze all the information from it. And so I'm really grateful for the opportunity to come this evening and sort of share that information with you and our parents, you know, experience and their child's experience in the special education program here in Westford. So very briefly, what is a CPAC? So we are Special Education Parent Advisory Council. Every school district in Massachusetts is required to have a CPAC. Ideally, they are parent led and parent driven. However, if you don't have parents available to run the CPAC, then the district themselves must establish one. CPACs have both an advisory and a participatory role. Those are defined by our state statute and regulation. We advise the school committee, I'm here tonight, on matters pertaining to the education and safety of students with disabilities. And we meet regularly with district officials to help plan, develop, and evaluate our special education program. Our mission, we are self-governed and we have established bylaws. Our mission is to foster understanding, respect, and of course, support for students with disabilities in our community. We aim to be a resource for families that are navigating the often complex process that is special education. And we hopefully serve as a bridge between families and the district to help drive systemic changes. The purpose of our survey, to fulfill this regulatory obligation to help evaluate and improve the special education program, we seek feedback from our families. And so the annual survey is one way that we do that. We also have meetings throughout the school year where we invite families to attend and sort of share their perspective. We have a, an email list or an email that parents reach out to us directly when they have issues as well as a parent Facebook forum that is fairly active. An effective CPAC wants to take our parents' input, shape those into concrete issues, and then offer those back to the district leadership with, with a goal of positive changes either into programs, policies, or procedures. So this year's survey ran from March eighteenth through April fourth via Google Form. We promoted it through the school and district newsletters as well as our social media and our email list. And truly, the goal of this survey is just to provide an opportunity for reflection, to see what's working, what our challenges are, and also help guide future CPAC initiatives. Just briefly on the demographics, there are additional slides at the end of the slide deck. I tried to move some to the end for timing, of course, shorten it up a little bit this time. We did have fewer responses this year in comparison to previous years. Of those, eighty-eight percent of our families were Westford Public School students. Ten percent were out of district. Two percent were private school. We did have distribution or respondents from all grades. However, we didn't get any in our eighteen to twenty-two program this year. The majority of our respondents were through grades six through eight. Eighty percent of those were children who are on IEPs, are families who have students on IEPs, and twelve percent were on 504s. So we do ask a lot of questions around communications. The CPAC, we think the foundation of a strong IEP team is solid communication. And so we ask our parents, what is their perspective of how that communication is going? So first question we ask is when you think about your child's special education team, how they communicate with you about your child's progress? How do you feel about that? We have five responses. This year, only three were chosen. So forty percent of families surveyed said that the communication from the school was just right. Twenty-eight percent of families said that it was okay, but they feel they could provide more updates. And thirty-three percent of families said that there's rarely or never communication from the school unless I ask for an update. Next slide. And so now that we've been asking, we asked the same question for the last five years. We can really start looking at trends over time. And so this is a trend over time chart. Horizontally, we see the, the last five years that we've asked this question. And then vertically, that's the percent respondents. And so each colored line represents one of those answers. So the red line on the bottom is that there's rarely or never communication from the school, even when I ask for an update. That was not selected this year. And the blue line is that the school over communicates. We didn't get any of that response this year either. The green line is that the communication from the school is just right. And as you notice, that did kind of decrease this year in comparison to the last two. And then the orange line is there's rarely or never communication from the school unless I ask for an update. And that increased just slightly this year. Excuse me. There she is. Daniel Thompson's in the house.
No problem, Daniel.
So then we asked our families, what is your comfort level when voicing concerns regarding your child's progress to your teachers and staff? Most families, sixty-four percent, were comfortable voicing their concerns, although we said twenty-three percent were uncomfortable. They either chose somewhat uncomfortable or very uncomfortable. And so this year, we asked families to expand on that. If they chose uncomfortable or somewhat uncomfortable, what they felt those barriers were for communication. Next slide. And so the family's comments were, I feel dismissed or ignored. They felt their needs were minimized. They felt maybe there was a lack of follow through. Some said they just don't have great communication with their child's teacher. They feared retaliation. Maybe when they asked for support, that it just backfires and then staff burnout. Parents are very aware that our staff is struggling to meet all the needs that our students have at this time. We asked, what's your comfort when requesting additional support? Sixty-six percent of families feel comfortable when they feel their child needs additional support of asking for that, while another sixteen percent chose, you know, very uncomfortable or somewhat uncomfortable. And so again, we asked families to expand on that. If they chose the uncomfortable, just so we can get a little bit more perspective on what that experience is. Here, concerns include requests being dismissed or denied. There is a fear of judgment, maybe being labeled like the difficult parent, staff capacity issues, of course, and then supports being delayed until a child is in crisis. And then the special education process, it's very, you know, vast and somewhat confusing. And so we asked our families, what is their comfort regarding their knowledge of the special education process? So sixty-three percent of families felt comfortable with their knowledge, while an additional twenty-nine percent selected either somewhat uncomfortable or very uncomfortable. And so we, we go into that and dive in a little bit deeper to those responses. The next slide, please. The parents' concerns, discomfort stems from lack of knowledge. Some saying that it's like a foreign language. It is really a foreign language. Unclear roles, so the, the terms and the lingo's that we're using is somewhat different. Feeling like they need an advocate in order to obtain services. One more slide. And then they had frustrations with the system, feeling that it's very complex. They have a fear of missing out on services because they don't know what to ask for. And then that power imbalance is, you know, without an advocate with me, am I really getting what my child needs? So one of our duties outlined in that state law and regulation is that we coordinate a basic rights workshop with the district. And this basic rights workshop is what your rights, you and your child's rights are under state and federal laws regarding special education. And so we want to know if our parents or our families are aware of this. So we've asked this question the last three years. We see those numbers are going up in the terms of yes. So it sort of helps us gauge whether or not this outreach is, is working. We, as a CPAC, try to create opportunities for parents to learn more about topics of interest for them. And so we ask, what are you interested in learning about? And we see for the last four years, our parents are staying very consistent. Executive functioning issues. Mental health and SEL supports, the IEP and 504 compliance, staff training. And I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong page with that. Yes, the IEP, mental health. And then this year, we did see an increase in dyslexia, wanting to learn more about dyslexia, having informal chats with the director and as well as behavioral issues and supports.
Can I jump in for a quick question there, Melissa? Is that like a bulleted list that people rank? Like how, what's the format for that type of question?
They can select any of those topics. So they can select multiple ones.
I see, okay. So they might, they might not choose, like you're only choosing your top?
No, they can choose as many as they want.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
And then we get into what are our parents saying? So we ask our parents to, we have some open ended questions. These are for families whose students do attend Westford Public Schools. And we ask, what is your greatest concern in the student's education? What do you think the top priorities for Westford Public School should be? And then we ask for additional feedback or suggestions for the CPAC. And so when you look at the top parents' concerns across all years, they center around common topics, including the IEP and the 504, the implementation as well as compliance, mental health and SEL supports, staff training, dyslexia, and then inclusive access. And this year, when we're looking at our parents' concerns, they centered around services that are delayed or inconsistent,[1684.11] they centered around services that are delayed or inconsistent, ones that require strong advocacy in order to be delivered. And when we ask parents, what is your priority for Westford Public Schools? Families want strength and support for diverse learners, better communication, staff empowerment, helping support our staff, a culture of inclusion and empathy. And they also call for more transparency and then consistency across schools as well. So part of our duties is to, will we offer recommendations to the district to help address some of our parents' concerns? And so this slide is to acknowledge the district's efforts in response to prior CPAC feedback. Some has been spoken about here in previous meetings. So the Wayfinder SEL curriculum pilot at the Miller and Day School, with restorative practice training, UDL and behavioral training, co-teaching pilots, IEP system, the new digitization, expanded reach and sale programs, and then updated program descriptions and parent engagement policies. And so that'll bring us to the recommendations for this year. And we wanted to align our recommendations this year with the Equity Audit, because it makes sure that what we're asking for connects with what the district already knows and may be also working on. And so the Equity Audit gave solid recommendations and a look at what's working and what could be improved upon to support all students fairly, including those with disabilities. And so you'll see in these recommendations, we did try to connect them back specifically to Equity Audit findings. So the first one is improve communication around UDL and MTSS. Why is this important? So parents are a vital member of the IEP team, or the advocate for the child. But parents cannot advocate effectively for their children if they don't know what supports are available, when and how the supports are offered, and what is the difference between a general education support and special education services? When the system is unclear, parents can feel disempowered in meetings, and they may not know what to ask for, or they can wait too long before asking for help or requesting evaluations. And so recommendation two is to ensure consistency across schools. So the Equity Audit had a finding that families and staff report inconsistent implementation of support across buildings. This means potentially that students with disabilities do not have access to the same service supports or opportunities, depending on what school they attend here in Westford. So families have a concern is that the quality of communication, maybe the support inclusion, and even the basic service delivery, they compare vary by building to building. And that means when they compare their experiences with other families, they have a fear that their child could be missing out. So this makes it harder for parents to know what to advocate for and what to expect from the system. Recommendation three, this is from the Equity Audit, too, is that they clarify entry and exit criteria for IEP and specialized programs. So the specialized programs, those sub-separate classrooms where our students are removed from general ed and they're being serviced in a different classroom. Most families feel uncertain about how or why their child qualifies or doesn't qualify for services. And so lack of a clear criteria can lead to either perceived or actual disparities. And so while IEP should be individualized, because it's like in the name, IEP, is, we still want to try and work for consistent standards for eligibility and placement because this does help reduce inequities. Support within classrooms before pullouts. So if a child is on an IEP and they need services, often they're removed from the general education classroom in order to get those services. What we like to see is more support within classroom. Push in services. Why is this important? Because it reflects best practice, and it responds directly to both the family concerns and equity gaps identified in the Equity Audit. Research has shown that when students with disabilities learn alongside their peers in the general education classroom, they do better socially, emotionally, and academically. The UDL and the MTSS framework are designed to support diverse learners within the classroom, within the general education classroom. So if pullouts are used too quickly, students may not be given the chance to benefit from those proactive, flexible strategies. And so while some pullouts are really appropriate, especially for intensive services, they should always be driven by data and not convenience or tradition. Five is going to be give educators time to plan for inclusion, effective inclusion education. It doesn't happen by accident. Co-teaching doesn't happen by accident. It is through intentional collaborative planning between general educators and special education staff. Without this time, even the best strategies and goals will fall apart in the day-to-day practice. We just really wanted to highlight that, you know, our teachers need support if we want them to be able to implement these sort of things. And then six is address program access barriers at the middle school level. So now that you have all looked very extensively at the high school, start times, as well as their credits, is there an opportunity to start looking at the middle school and evaluating its schedule through the lens of inclusion and equity? Families have consistently reported that students with disabilities in middle school are missing out on certain opportunities, specifically foreign language, due to the way academic support is scheduled. Many of our families will say, though, case by case, the teachers and their team work with them collaboratively to allow those students to access the foreign language if they really want to. This is a sort of systemic issue in place that maybe we could turn our attention to and look at, is this practice still working in the middle schools? Or if there is a better solution to do this academic support? And then recommendations for ourselves for the CPAC. We want to strengthen our ability to serve families and partner effectively with the district. So first, we're always going to be increasing our volunteer engagement. We are a parent-led and parent-driven organization, and so our ongoing goal is to increase our membership. The number of volunteers, we want to create a culture of volunteering. This helps, you know, decrease some of the pressure and makes leadership roles more manageable. We want to improve outreach and education to help families better understand the special education process. We want to build or establish liaisons at each school to help foster relationships between CPAC and then each individual school building. This helps allow schools to see CPAC as a resource, both for families as well as staff. And then we want to offer more workshops or forums, or else put families in contact with that. The CPACs from other districts, they'll often host events and speaker opportunities, which they share out to the community. So we try and put our families in contact in that way as well, if we're not hosting here in the district. And then we want to continue collecting our feedback regularly, through our annual survey, through our meetings throughout the year, through our email communications. This ongoing feedback helps us to stay responsive to families throughout the year. And of course, fulfill our advisory responsibilities. One of our core obligations under the Massachusetts law, to advise the school committee on matters related to education and safety of students. So coming back here and presenting again our annual survey. And elevating parents' concern is a key part of that mission. So I don't give a lot of information out. There's always opportunities, if you want to reach out later, if some of this, like, you know, percolates in there for a while, but I'm happy to answer any questions at this time or later, of course, too.
Thank you.
First of all, thank you for the thoughtful presentation. One of the things I noticed right off the bat was the highlight of the drop in responses. And I was just wondering if you had any sense as to what that might be due to? Are you seeing the engagement still, or is it just?
Yes. Yeah, we've had a lot of people show up at our meetings this year, engage on our social media page, reach out to us directly. So I don't think it has to do, I mean, there could be all kinds of reasons, you know, really.
I could chime in a little bit. I will take some blame. I will take some blame for that, though, really, because we used to do like individual outreach, just to remind people, because as CPAC parents, we have a lot on the plate, and we might see it and try to get back to it. And yeah, I wasn't able to do the personal outreach that I had done in previous years to kind, right at the end, right? We were always tracking, you know, as I got closer to the closing deadline, and we'd do an extra push, and we didn't do that extra push this year. So that could have been a partial reason for the lower.
Yeah, and I certainly understand everyone has a lot on their plate, and especially here.
That could be one reason.
Yeah, it could be the timing. It could be that, you know, maybe people just responded last year, and they didn't feel like responding again this year. It could be that people are happy, right? I mean, really, it's hard to tell.
Was it the same time of year?
Yes.
Are you always consistent?
We are trying to do it at the same time, like around, at the end of the year. We sort of use the survey results at the end of the year to drive our goals for the next year. So we like to do it at the end when people have sort of
Like that March.
Had their experience. Yeah.
You said it was live, like, March to April or something?
Yeah, at the end of March, the beginning of April.
Does that outreach have to come from you guys directly? Or are you able to collaborate with the school system and WPS on that?
So we reach out directly to the principals of the schools, and they'll usually include our CPAC updates in their newsletters. The district will also do it. We don't have an email list for all of the special education families in Westford.
I feel like I have my daughters on a five oh four. So I feel like when they changed the system, there was like an email that went to every parent that had a child that would be involved with that change in the system. So just thinking, like, could they use that email list that would broaden the scope of kids that are involved in the special education program? You're like, hey.
No, just listen.
Like, I feel like there was a targeted email that went out and said, like, hey, we're having this, you're going to do this in private school now. And I assume that went to people who only had children that were on some sort of a five oh four or IEP. So it feels like somewhere there exists to be a list of parents that have children that fall into this bucket that maybe they could, even if they can't send themselves, but maybe they could send something to the district to push out.
Thank you.
I just had one other question. How many, do we have an idea, I'm sure you do, maybe you don't have it offhand, how many students fall into this special education bucket? Because I was just trying to figure out the number of respondents to this survey versus the number of kids that receive the services.
I know that. So it's about, when you count the IEPs and five oh fours, and our response rate this year was about two point five percent.
Melissa, you mentioned liaisons in the buildings. Do you have some of your members on the various school parent advisory councils right now? Do they help support, like, are they, any of them tied into those PACs as well at program-to-program levels?
Not at this time, but it's definitely something we've spoken about, is that we could have the people who are on the school advisory councils also be a CPAC liaison as well, to have that sort of like overlap. It would be really great.
I like the tie-in of those recommendations to the Equity Audit.
Yes.
And I think, you know, as the next year, we're building out those school-based teams, really being deliberate about, you know, those discussions happening at each school site, you know, focusing on special education and five oh fours, you know, that is one branch of the many branches, a multi-year process it's going to take.
That's what, the Equity Audit had so much in it. And so I really wanted to take that opportunity to use those. And, okay, how does that tie in with special education? And I hope that this is somewhat highlighted, where we would like to see some of the attention go to.
I think that's really powerful, because instead of feeling like, here's this other list of more recommendations or something separate.
It's connected.
Right, instead of like, all these lists that I'm sure, you know, are in people's minds when they're making goals and making, you know, creating PD and all that stuff. Now, it circles back to the Equity Audit, which I think is
I thought the Equity Audit was very powerful. It has so much information in it that it can feel, I think, very overwhelming, for sure. So, but if we, as a district, could really utilize that and leverage it, I think it would be really important and impactful for our district.
Well, you saw patterns as well, which was, you know, between your survey and the Equity Audit, which I think really is strong evidence that they support each other in the information that they were both finding. So I think that's really good echo.
Any other questions from the committee? Aside from our overwhelming gratitude, it's always a thoughtful survey, a thoughtful presentation. You're a great timekeeper. It's just very well done. We really appreciate what you bring to our district and your presence for families.
Thank you. We really appreciate the collaboration. It's been really great working with Gerard Coughlin's office and the school committee. Love to hear who our new school committee liaison's going to be. Oh, is it you? Okay, great. Thank you again, we really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thanks to you guys. We are moving on to facility rental fee updates with the expected vote. So any questions or follow-up discussion based on our initial discussion at our last meeting? To recap, for anyone watching or the public, or for anyone's memory, that was some inflation and contract-driven increases across the board. Also, a renaming of that third column from for-profit to all other. And then there was an update in the guidelines to align the, that additional custodial coverage to align with our tentative agreement with AFSMI, so. Any further discussion on there? And I think I said this at the last meeting, but it's that time of year. I'll just repeat myself, that in the conversations, Jenny, Jeff, and I acknowledged more work, more work and improvements that can happen in this area. We think that there is some opportunity for consistency and some sort of further, further definitions that we can give to the guidelines. The process as a whole has sort of been new to us in like the last three years or so. So I think all of that is up for evaluation, for lack of a better word.
And Kind of taking shape, really. We're figuring what it looks like.
And it does tie into two or three specific policies in our policy manual. So I think all of that will be, we talked about a working group, so we'll see how that flushes out with goals and stuff.
So essentially, today, we're just talking rates. We're not talking everything else.
Yes, it's like, it's like, yes, and both. You know, like, this is what's in front of us, so that when FY26 requests start coming in for rentals, that they have an updated fee to base, to work off of, with the acknowledgement that there is more work to do.
Always more work to do.
Did votes?
Sure.
On the updated rental fees?
Great.
I guess keep track. Now, Shayna's made it like a, you get points, right?
Just trying to get points in Valerie's vote, keeping the meeting moving.
Any points, any seconds?
Seconds.
Thank you. Okay, last call for commentary. Okay, all in favor of the new facility rental fee unanimous? Thank you. I appreciate you making up some time there. We're going to move to student activity fund status. And welcome Director of Finance Jenny Lynn to the microphone.
For student activity account updates. And first, I would like to help you to refresh the memory. At the end of last school year, the school committee approved the closure of certain inactive student activity accounts. And these included both positive and negative account balances at the elementary school and middle school level. And these actions have been completed by individual school. For this fiscal year, and the school's financial assistants have provided us a summary of account balances by individual school, including class, grade level, and school system-wide accounts. We have compiled this information into a summary memo, uploaded for the school committee to review. According to DESI guideline, it's recommended that school committee annually approve the maximum checking account balances by the school level. So if Catherine, you can pull out this memo. This memo includes the both saving, holding account and the checking account balances for individual school. If you can just scroll down a little bit for this page, you can see the holding account and checking account balances. Just some background information for our new school committee member, Jessie and Shayna, what's the difference between the holding account and checking accounts? So basically, the holding account records on the receipt from all student activity clubs. This includes the receipt from like a field chip, student activity clubs, or sports events. So when we need to pay for those expenditure, the town processes a weekly warrant, so we can transfer the fund from holding account into checking account. So checking account is used for paying those invoices. So essentially, the holding account is functioned as revenue account, and checking account is used for the expenditure. So based on this year's account balances and also activity level, we are still recommending the spending limit for each school level remains the same as last school year. There are seven thousand for elementary school, thirty-five thousand for the middle school, and a hundred fifty thousand for high school. If you review this number, there's only one school, and that's it. On the checking account, maximum balance exceed the seven thousand, we will ask them to make a transfer from checking account back into holding account. So every school will be in compliance with this spending limit. So next topic is regarding the student activity account audit. In accordance with DESI guideline, and any student activity account with the expenditure more than more than twenty-five thousand dollars is required to go through a formal audit by the independent audit firm. So we contracted with Rosali Clark CPA firm last year. We conducted their WA's student activity account audit last year. And we are required to go through another formal audit for our elementary school and middle school. We have already scheduled the audit for this Wednesday and Thursday. The only reason we scheduled this audit so early, because we have two financial, school financial assistants. financial assistants. They handle for elementary schools audit, student activity account. They will either retire or resign before the end of the school year. So we just want to get the audit completed before their departure so we can ensure continuity and consistency for the audit. Also, in response to the audit finding from last year's WA student activity account, there has been some noticeable progress improvement we made throughout this fiscal year. As you know, school committee established a new school committee student activity account policy last year. So for this year, we set up a new WA's high school debit card for those major expenditure such as travel expenses, like hotel booking, air ticket purchasing. So our employee do not need to use their personal credit card to make those major purchase. So this not just only help our staff to relieve those financial burden on their shoulder, but also individual wouldn't like benefit their, like, using their personal credit card. So we are making sure on the school level, they follow the DESI guideline. In addition to that, throughout this fiscal year, business office have provided the extensive support and guidance for every school to carry out the bank reconciliation process for this year, especially our Assistant Finance Director Irene Masoki. She has spent tremendous amount of time trying to support each school for their bank reconciliation, particularly for WA. And I will discuss more detail about WA later. So our goal is to maintain a sustainable and consistency in the reconciliation routine all across the school level. First, let me just go through by individual school so you can see what's their request for this year. There is an individual school pages starting from Abbott School.
Oh, yeah, I got it, yeah.
Yeah. For Abbott School, they have two requests. The first one, they have some zero balance inactive account, those highlighted in pink. So they are asking school committee's approval to close those accounts. The second request, they are asking school committee's approval to close those inactive account for the total amount $1,031 into the system-wide school activity account. In theory, you see here, there's a PTO scholarship. In theory, PTO's money shouldn't be combined with student activity, but because this money was given to Abbott many years ago, so it's really hard and to contact the original PTO to send the money back. So they are trying to do a house cleaning, just close out into the system-wide account. Next school is Chris Foley.
Can I clarify? Is that system-wide or school-wide?
Uh, school-wide, sorry.
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Yes, school-wide.
Jenny, can I ask, does the committee feel like we should take these school by school? Or do you want to vote on them as a, just so we don't get lost?
Yeah.
Not that I expect it changes the outcome, but just to honestly, honestly keep some of our brains straight. So we can pause here on Abbott?
Yeah. Yeah, we should go through by each school because they have different kind of requests.
Yeah, so.
Can I ask then on the donations for students in need, why would that go back into a school-wide account? Because I know, like, I know that can often happen that, you know, families reach out to the principal looking for some support, so is there a reason why that should go back into the school-wide account rather than a separate pot?
That's actually based on the auditor's suggestion because for elementary school, we do not want to keep too many accounts. So even that's in the school-wide student activity account, you can still use the funding to pay for those students, they have those.
You can still use it, same purpose, yep.
The intention is there.
So we don't have to keep so many accounts, especially for elementary school. They don't have so much activity like a middle school or high school.
Gotcha.
Perfect. So the orange would be closed and the yellow would be closed and then moved into?
School-wide.
The school-wide. Any questions or concerns on there? Okay?
Changes to the Abbott School Activities Account?
Second. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, next one Jenny.
So next one is Chris Foley. Chris Foley is looking for establishment of two new school clubs. The first one is Fifth Grade Musical, and the second one is O'Connor Studio, because both of those clubs, they have lots of transaction for revenue expenditure, so they want to set up like two account just for the checking purpose. The second request is for the book fair. In accordance with Department of Local Service Special Revenue Fund Regulation, the book fair money should belong to the revolving account. I think we discussed about that last year. So they are asking they should send a check, cut a check, and put this check, deposit that into the revolving account, which is library book sale. We already have a revolving account, so we don't have the book fair included in the student activity.
And remind me, so Chris Foley would know, oh yeah, we've got $1,153 in there, that's ours, it's just in this district-wide account versus?
Yes, they do. And there's no, like, activity for many years for this account because they are already putting the money into the revolving account. So we just want to clean out this account in the student activity.
Jenny, can I ask a question? Can you, do we know why they want to establish an O'Connor Studios?
Is that a photography club?
No, it's not a.
Those are school photographers.
That's on a school picture.
But it's not a club, that's my point.
No, it's not a club.
Because actually in the school, I asked the same question. They said, when student taking those pictures, school pictures, we actually getting a credit for those pictures? So need, they need to keep account to check those credits.
All right, then that leads to a greater question on my part in consistency. You know, if we're doing that for one school, why are we not accounting for it the same way in others?
We are in one. Rob, you'll see on the net, Robinson has it as well too, but the others don't.
They don't all use O'Connors though either.
Oh, that's a.
Probably depends on what studio they're using.
Oh, everyone uses different studios.
Yeah, I'm just curious because again, I, I used O'Connor at Stony Brook forever. And we never had an O'Connor Studio account. O'Connors will, they will make a donation to the school based on.
Volume of sales?
Volume of sales, right, but I just don't know, I guess my, my question is again, it's the, it's the club aspect of it, right? Like, I mean, we're, whether, whether it's an account or not, it's, it's just, it's not a club.
Yeah, it's not a club, but that's, that's not a, like a revenue for the school's general ledger, that's for the students taking the school pictures. I don't know if every school, they all use O'Connor Studio, while some schools, they have this account, some other schools, they don't. Maybe that's just their preference by the individual school's financial assistants. That could be a follow-up question.
Do all schools use O'Connor Studios? Do you know?
That's something I'm not quite sure.
Not everybody's using the same studio. I think, maybe that's, that might be something we should just look into because again, what I'm noticing is this is a request coming from two sister schools, Robinson and Chris Foley. And so it might be a practice that one individual set up as the financial admin between those two buildings, and it made sense, but let's, before we actually establish it, maybe we should just kind of verify, is there, are other schools doing it in a different way? So that, I think the bigger thing being that there's consistency, even if people are using a different photographer, the practice is universal, right? So like if they're using Lifetouch or O'Connor, typically there is a donation that goes to the schools based on the volume of sales. So maybe that's something we should look to see. How that's, how that, what, what that looks like, so that, you're right, there's consistency.
So do we hold on the O'Connor Studio Club and, but approve the Fifth Grade Musical and Book Fair?
I have one more follow-up question before we, but, but I hear you. One is, in the interest of consistency, on the Abbott one, we left alone a library slash book fair account, but here, we're closing the book fair and moving it to the district-wide one. So I, I personally would feel comfortable sort of stepping through these with the acknowledgement that administration could work towards consistency and kind of flush things out where, where need be. I, I think like the intention, where, it's clear that the intention is to close inactive accounts, clean up, aim for consistency. I don't know that it's a best use of our time to kind of get lost in school by school.
Can I ask, would this be a good place for Finance Subcommittee to really dive in a little bit more and?
I mean, I'd be comfortable with that, like, task handed off, but maybe an update is given to the Finance Subcommittee in the fall. Like, I, I don't think, if they have plans with the audit and stuff and work over the summer, that makes sense to me to not hold up. But certainly, I think any learnings or reflections could, could be brought to the Finance Subcommittee in the fall. In that vein then, does it make sense to talk about it more holistically instead of school by school? If, if the intention is, like I said, summarized to close inactive accounts and work towards consistency, can we, would a vote in that vein make more sense?
Right, especially for the book fair account because we do notice some inconsistency for the book fair. Because we don't know if that's just different practice for individual school.
Especially with some transitions, if you're onboarding new individuals in those positions, how do you set that up for consistency? I think, I would, would, do you want to step through the rest of the schools to just see if anything else flushes, flushes out as specifics, but then we can lean towards a vote like that? Okay. So after Chris Foley was.
Can I just ask, this might be too specific, but I was just wondering if it should be called O'Connor Studios versus something like School Photos or something, just, I don't know if it matters.
Right, in case it changes.
It really doesn't matter, it's just accounting ledger in the Quicken Accounting Software just for their own purpose, for the reference. For day school, any inactive account, they don't have activity for 36 months. They are seeking school committee's approval to close out those nine student activity clubs for the total amount $3,680. They are requesting to establish a new club that's called Fifth Grade Play for the $5,319. The last request is regarding unclaimed check. That check was payable to forgotten and draw donation, was initially issued on 2018, almost seven years ago. So we did talk to our auditor, how can we handle those unclaimed checks, like, was issued many years ago? In theory, any check more than 90 days old, so people cannot deposit that. So based on the suggestion we receive from the auditor, we need to follow proper process and procedure. The first step, we need to post those unclaimed check to a local newspaper such as Loa Sun. In the meantime, we will need to create a web link for those all unclaimed checks. We don't just have one from day school, we have others from other school. And so the posting will be at least 60 days. And during those 60 days, the payee can contact us and file a claim so we can avoid the original check, reissue a new one. So after 60 days of posting, and we will need to convert those fund into a liability account because they are subject to unclaimed property law. And like for the town side, for church's office, they already have a website, just similar to this. We can just mirror this process and do the posting, starting from like next school year, and hopefully some payee will contact us to claim those checks.
Jenny, can you remind us, if you know it offhand, how much it costs to post in the Loa Sun?
So we can post everything, all on the checks, like a couple hundred dollars. Not extreme, not very expensive.
Well, if the checks don't amount to the posting, then it's questionable.
Is it going to be a negative? Yeah.
I had no idea the town had a website. This is, okay.
Also for Namnasset, and there's an inactive account, they are looking to close. That's miscellaneous donation 46 and 32. They also have two unclaimed checks, and they are asking if they can follow the process and procedure. For next school is Robinson, they are trying to close one inactive account for the amount $117 into the school-wide student activity account. Next one is Miller, and Miller is pretty nice and clean. They don't have too many requests. And Blanchard for the middle school. Middle school, there's one account, it's called Uncategorized, $26,000, and they don't have any transaction for many years. They would like to close this one into the school-wide activity account. And for those unclaimed check, they have 21 checks, total amount 369, very minimum amount still sitting in our accounts. Next one is Stony Brook.
Jenny, quick question on Blanchard. I understand wanting to clear out uncategorized, but they also don't have, oh, school-wide activities, I didn't see it there, okay. Yep, never mind, I was just wondering like where.
Where's it go?
Yeah.
Right.
Right, or like a general one, okay, sorry about that.
Yeah, just lots of cleaning we need to do because there is no action for many years.
Yeah, as long as they all have like that school-wide, you know.
Yeah, we are trying to clean everything so we can have a fresh start.
I know, it's so much work, we appreciate it.
Daniel, weren't you in eighth grade in 2020?
Yeah, because there's so many checks.
This is the senior class they're looking at.
Yeah, actually, yes, yes.
The world shut down when you were in eighth grade.
Yes.
I'm looking at the names and I'm like, huh.
And it's all for $11.
That must be the check we issue for students, but they never deposit those checks. That's probably ended up at the bottom of the drawer somewhere.
Refunded field trip or something.
Would it be cheaper to reach out directly if we can? Then go to the web, not go to the newspaper?
We are trying to ask the school's financial assistant to reach out to those payee, not like three years later, they need to reach out to them by the end of the school year if they haven't deposited those checks.
I mean, some, I've seen staff names on here, I'm sure there can be some cleanup done before we go post all of them.
The next middle school is Stony Brook, and there's one zero balance account, SSEP Mission 14. There's no balance, and next request is, they are hoping to change the name for the Washington DC club to Field Trip Scholarship Fund because the DC chip is no longer available. So they are trying to convert this account as a scholarship fund for those students, and they might need those financial assistance. The next one is Book Fair, and that's the same request. We will cut a check from student activity and move that into revolving account. So when we go through the audit, we wouldn't have this account included in student activity. That's not in compliance with the regulation. And for unclaimed checks, there are 13 for Stony Brook. We don't have a total, probably it's around like a thousand dollars. For WA's student activity account. For WA's student activity account. So for WA, their student activity account. Just want to give you more background information. We did not receive any information update from WA last year. So we are very pleased to see some progress has been made for this fiscal year. As you know, and WA's student activity account has been particularly challenging due to a longstanding backlog of bank reconciliation originated prior to September twenty three. That's before our team's involvement. So this issue has been compounded by the high volume and complexity of the transaction level at high school. And so to address this challenge, Irene has been working with the high school's financial assistants every single month, trying to support what's on the best practice for conducting and timely and accurate reconciliation. So this year, Principal Tumi and the financial assistants, they compile a whole list for those inactive account, total amount thirteen thousand three hundred fifty nine. They are requesting if those account, they can clean out those account into schoolwide student activity account. There's also first request for three D printing. They are hoping they can move that to robotics if that's possible. Because that's very similar for student activity. Flip to next page. During our review process, we noticed something doesn't make sense. For Disney two thousand eleven, there's a negative account balance for seventy five thousand dollars. And because how could a club with like a negative balance seventy five? And we checked on the record, that was on April sixth, two thousand eleven, the fund was transferred into a CD account. That should never be allowed for student activity, but that happened like fourteen years ago. And WA class created a CD account. We, after we confirmed with the town's treasurer on two thousand eleven's cashbook, it's verified seventy six thousand one hundred sixty three was transferred into a CD. And then that CD was closed out to student activity. Essentially, there's a wash, so we only need to recall one thousand one hundred sixty three dollars for interest. So we already asked on the financial assistant to make that adjusting general entry. And we asked her to keep all the, you know, supporting document just for the audit purpose. And I'm sure there's some other similar issue in the past. And that's some major one we found over here, that's why I want to list out here. And they also have some outstanding check more than one year old. They will need to go through the process and procedure. So during this whole review process for WA's student activity account, we identified several areas that require attention and improvement. The first one is the bank reconciliation practice. Because we noticed some checks, some checks they have been marked as reconciled in the accounting system. However, those check has not been cleared by the bank. So that's a not, that's not a proper accounting practice. So to correct this error, Irene assisted high school's financial assistant making the adjusting general entry for the total amount seven thousand four hundred ninety eight, covering sixteen checks. That was made from period from September twenty twenty three to November twenty three. So we are making sure fiscal year twenty four and fiscal year twenty five, they are fully reconciled. But there's still some carryover accumulated issue, we still need to spend more time to make correction. So we just make as much as we can. So our recommendation for the high school is they need to ensure bank reconciliation are completed in a timely and accurate manner. For any outstanding check beyond a reasonable period, they need to contact the payee and follow up with them, ask them to deposit the check. Instead of click that as reconcile in the system, that's not the right way to do that. And the second thing we recommend is for those negative balance in those active accounts. For those green highlights you can see in this document, they have negative balance for those active account. As per that C guideline, negative balances are not allowed it. So the principal should immediately investigate and resolve those deficits and determine whether they are due to a temporary timing issue or actual shortfall. If that's a true deficit, so the school must either reallocate the fund from the accounts with advisor's approval, or they should use the schoolwide student activity account to cover the deficit with school committee's approval. The last recommendation is we notice there's some delayed deposit and turnover for Wada Theater Club because those turnover was not submitted to business office in a timely manner. And we are confirmed there is no receipt or online ticket details provided to the principal and financial assistants. So we are recommending the advisor need to turn over the fund within a reasonable timeframe. So they need to maintain a real time receipt log for those receipts. So that's the report I have today, and we hope that WA can continue to make those improvements. And we will provide the support as needed. And thank you so much, and I probably go over in the fifteen minutes timeframe.
No, no, this is good. Can I ask a quick follow up on the Wada? Wasn't the receipt recommendation out of the guideline work last summer?
Yes. For WA.
Should have been happening all year.
They have an online ticketing sale platform, it's called Show Tickets.
Show A or some.
Yeah, so they should be able to print out a list of those receipt and provide those receipt when they send the money, send a check to student activity. We are hoping they can do that for next school year.
I have a quick question on class of accounts, twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, and twenty four. Obviously, we're keeping them open for this period of time, but do we expect expenditures out of those going forward? Or is that a a normal thing that there's lingering expenditures two, three, four?
So Principal Tumi told me for those account, based on student activity policy, we have a hundred eighty days after student graduate. They need to contact the student body. If they want to close out this account, that money should be transfer transferred out to student body. So that fund doesn't belong to student activity anymore. But Principal Tumi would still like to keep the class twenty one to class twenty four as an open account because probably they still need to do some follow up work. Because they close out, you know, they just close out Disney account. So they they just don't have time to contact those students yet probably. That's my assumption.
Okay, any other clarifying questions?
There's a really sizable uncategorized account, is is.
That's really good question. I asked them the same question. Do they have any activity for those uncategorized account? They have a systemwide account with the negative balance. So they should do some research and checking those detailed transaction. Do they want to combine account or what's going on with those accounts? Like for there's one middle school, they have like a three interest account, like an interest earn, interest transfer, interest included. They should be all combined into like a one interest account. That's some additional work we still need to do, work with school because we have lots of work on our play, sometimes we we just don't have nothing with for. We are, we're, we're trying our best.
You've done an incredible amount already.
Yeah, I I I think it it does need to be said that it is a lot of work. But at the same time, a lot of this can also lead to mistakes, right? That all of a sudden, it's a bigger issue than just cleaning things. So so having that detail is going to be really important going forward.
So why don't we get the maximum account balances vote out of the way? Because that would, that's more specific, that's very sort of clear cut.
Yes.
That was on the front page, one of the memo, yep.
And for the book fair, I think there's only one school for Abbott has book fair account. We can check with Abbott because no other school has book fair. Any book fair money should be, should belong to revolving account.
The top, the district wide one, yeah, okay. So I'm looking for a motion on what's on the screen. The recommended maximum checking account balances for the, I think, I, is that a typo to move to next year? For the twenty five, twenty six school year? Oh, on the memo, yep.
That's for this year.
But we're recommending it for next year?
We always get approval for this year.
Okay.
That's our practice for many years. We get approval by the end of the year for this fiscal year, not next fiscal year.
Is it best practice, Jenny, to change that?
It's not best practice, that's why if you guys want to change that for next year, we can do that for next year. We should actually at this point, you know, getting approval for fiscal year twenty six. Not getting approval for this fiscal year, we already ended the school year.
Can I, can I go ahead and make the motion that we make these recommendations for school year twenty four, twenty five, and twenty five, twenty six at this time?
Yes.
Any final commentary there? Okay, all in favor? Unanimous? I, the only other thing I was going to add was, does that make more sense in the fall then? Or do you think the spring still makes sense and then with the vote, the balance is set? So like next year, you would come and set the balance for the following year?
I think it makes more sense at the beginning of the year for for the fall because we can close out this fiscal year. We have an ending balance as of June thirty instead of report this balance as as of May.
Yeah.
Because we always need to report that in May.
So what if we put down this as one of our fall finance subcommittee agenda items to say, you know, we could get an update maybe on the consistency things that we're seeing? The the O'Connor Studios, the book fairs, those type of accounts? And then check in on maybe starting a new process of a fall maximum account balance?
That's a great suggestion.
Everybody good with that? So with that said, I do think it makes sense to kind of tie up the other school specific recommendations about accounts opening or closing and and inactive ones. So if we're comfortable with acknowledging all of this work, acknowledging the intentions of where this is going, towards consistency, towards reducing the inactive accounts, I think that makes more sense to me as a vote instead of in the weeds of each school. And gives administration that and staff that direction and and that trust, so.
Yeah, my only comment on that is I I would like to see true consistency across grade specific schools for the fact of if one financial person needs to go and help cover for a long term absence or something, it will make it a lot easier for 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 that, knowing where what account should be where. As opposed to like, I'm just seeing like, specific field trips as opposed to one big field trip account, you know? How should it be handled going forward? But I think that's something I I will leave, I would leave to administrations best.
And we could check in on that in the fall, right, like, so. Okay, so I guess I'll make a motion to to authorize administration and staff to close inactive accounts that they have recommended closing, closing, and look towards consistency in the accounts that are remaining. For element, yeah, for, sorry, for all grades.
Second, okay.
Any other commentary? All in favor? Unanimous? Please thank Irene for us, we know how much work this is, it's clear that.
Definitely a teamwork, not just Irene and also on the financial assistants, they'll help.
Yeah. Great, thank you. One, one final clarifying question. You mentioned the town unclaimed property check. Is the school's ones going to be incorporated into that list or a separate list?
Oh, we can do a separate list, that's, we already checked with our auditor. We can just create a link in the business office website and just posting all those checks together.
Okay, because it sounds like they're, like if we can leverage their existing website.
Do we want it to be a separate thing is kind of what you're asking, right?
I guess.
The town, their checks, they're for the general ledger.
Yeah.
But these checks, they are student activity.
Okay, so you don't want to mix them, but.
Yeah, we probably want to separate them.
I guess I'm just thinking from like a backend website point of view, if it's easy for them to just say, I don't know, you know, or or like here's another, like mirror that, yeah, instead of trying to create it on ours.
Or even if the town is already having to post to the newspaper. You know, if we can have an efficiency of split that cost of between town and school, that would seem to make a lot more sense.
I checked town's website, all those checks were dated like twenty sixteen. So they probably already followed through the process for those checks for twenty sixteen. We have checked from twenty two thousand nine to twenty twenty, it's a long time span.
Right, I would just see if they're about to do the process.
Another batch?
And if they are in a reasonable amount of time, maybe we hold off until it matches.
Okay, sure. Yes, write that down as a shared efficiency. It also makes me curious, since they all have the same date, maybe how recent the townside batch has happened, but. Okay, great, thanks, Jenny, really appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your time.
Oh, man, I messed up my screen. Thanks, Daniel, take care. Have a great summer. Yeah, all right, now I'm all off. Okay, so, next up, yes, thank you, field trips. There is a list of forty something in the packet, and obviously, this builds off of last meeting's discussion from the presentation we had from the officers, the class of twenty twenty six officers about instituting a new overnight field trip. According to our policy P five four oh four, our vote is required for any overnight or foreign country trip, so.
Out of state.
Yeah. Overnight or foreign.
Well, I looked that up just the other day and I thought it's also, oh, no, 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 because up here, this is where it gets, it's not in the list. But, well, okay.
Oh, yeah, note that out of state travel requires school committee approval regardless, okay.
Right, it should be in like, I was thinking the same thing, policy. It's in the narrative, but it's not in the list.
That's weird. Out of state, overnight, and foreign trips.
Wouldn't foreign be considered out of state anyway?
It says it to a foreign country next to it, but now it's out of state too. Okay, so we have a comprehensive list in the packet. They all had ours next to them, do you want to speak to that? Repeat in the far column, new versus repeat. You can see that there are lots of opportunities for our students to travel based on their interests, clubs, activities, or participation in a program, language, so.
Some of them that said that they were repeats, I'll just say like the Japan trip, I'm like, I've been here for eleven years and I don't ever remember WA going to Japan.
So that's self-reported.
Right, it is all self-reported, yes, thank you. So I'm like, is it a, is it a repeat as in it's an international trip with the same organization? Just a different location is kind of the way that I might be thinking that they looked at it.
Okay.
But when you get to the international trips, I'm like, hmm, no, we've been there.
Same continent? Maybe it's the same continent?
Yeah.
Well, even the, the, uh, the one that was presented to us yesterday, not yesterday. Last time, is, and is a repeat.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, I think
I think that R might have just been an oversight of like fill, fill all.
Yes.
Right.
Ask what the yellow highlights were.
The ones coming over this year's?
Are they new?
Highlight, highlights.
Sure. Those yellow highlights are the ones that are going international, I believe, right? No, they're not Washington.
There's one that's not.
Maybe they're the newish?
I think they're newish.
There might be the new, Japan.
Yeah, Japan.
London.
Yep.
Okay.
Back to Italy.
Yeah, those are the
Germany is not a new one. Germany is
However We are waiting for more details on that one, so that one should have been
We, that was one we're going to mention because the others are all using a, a company. And so we directed these advisors to, in the future, if they wanted to do this trip again, to use a, a travel company specifically. And so we need them to get that information to us. They have not provided that updated information to us.
Okay.
So in that case, it was a new version of that trip is what we were anticipating.
Okay.
So that's where, I think the highlights would be
So I would recommend any vote there is dependent on that further information and administration approval.
So I, I will say that that German trip is very well organized as it was, so.
However, no, I, I, the issue is, is that we had, this was the beginning of the debit card, right? So the idea that an individual staff member was putting things on their own cards and/or needing to use, you know, take cash with them to travel because they did an excellent job organizing the trip all by themselves. But what we have, we've made it very clear that in order for this trip to continue, you really need to work with a company where everything is going through a company and the company is paying the people in Europe. So that that, honestly, that stress and responsibility doesn't fall on the shoulders of a staff member.
Mm-hmm.
Or the liability of Westford Public Schools renting a car.
Right, okay.
Okay, so any other, maybe we could kind of separate any other questions or, or feedback on the trips that we didn't get the presentation on? Like the German trip or any others that were? Okay, so then I, I guess I would open it up to the conversation building off of our, the presentation we received last meeting for the next year senior class to go to Mount Washington during their senior week. The, you know, they gave us a handout with some information and I opened it up to a discussion, I know. There's going to be a discussion, so.
I, I think, you know, I'll just kind of say, first of all, it was an amazing presentation. And I think so thoughtful and very well thought out. I, um, remembering some of our conversations around the DC and the idea of calling them class trips. You know, I, and I know it's middle school versus high school is also a different age. I just, you know, and I don't know, have a, have a particular opinion one way or the other, but um, I think, you know, if we're recommending in favor of doing this class trip, you know, that's overnight. Um, maybe being mindful of some of the conversation, and I can't remember who was on or wasn't as part of those DC conversations, but we were talking about kind of a, you know, some of those equity issues, issues, staffing issues. And so I think, you know, it's something that if we go ahead and approve this, we're, you know, open to that idea of like an eighth grade trip coming back in, in some shape or form or an overnight, because, you know
I, I will say, I think a big difference here, and this is one of the things that we directed this, the students on, which they, I think they presented to you, is that this, while it includes an overnight, it doesn't require an overnight.
Yes.
That's one of the reasons why they looked within a drivable distance, which I think is a major difference between this and even the eighth grade trip to DC.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, 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 I've put a lot of thought into this because, you know, Dr. Chu and I were one of the first people to hear their, to hear the original request to Busch Gardens and I'm reflecting on that conversation we had with them. And obviously I was part of the DC field trip conversation last fall. So, um, you know, what, what, how I'm approaching this vote tonight, this topic to us, is that this is sort of like a, uh, sorry, I gave myself some notes to look at. Like a, like a pilot approval. You know, I think one of the things we talked about with Dan and with the students was how do you build in that reflection? How does it go? It doesn't, it doesn't feel like to me that this is a blanket authorization of class trips
Yeah.
reinstated across the board. You know, I do think that in the DC field trip conversation and even here, what's, what's kind of underneath this is wrestling with this idea of is a class trip that's open and accessible to all a value of the district? And how do you approach that in a way that makes the barriers low enough that, as Dr. Chu said, students who want to participate can participate? And I think that what we've seen from the students is an example of not using equity as a reason to say no to something, but they've built equity in. And so it's, it's like a total difference of having something come to us and say, that's not equitable and so we're going to say no. But they've built it into all of their thoughtful steps. And that's a, to me, a totally different animal to say, you know, what would make students feel safe and, and belonging? What supports are in place for cost and accessibility? And how can we ensure that, that students feel open to this opportunity?
That makes sense. I like that phrase, I'm building the equity in.
Does anyone have any other?
I agree with most of what, well, with what you said. It definitely was a thoughtful presentation. I thought they definitely tried to address a lot of the different barriers. I'm still struggling with the cost versus the amount of time that they're going to be there. They're really there like a day and a half. And a seven hundred and fifty dollar, you know, seven to seven hundred and fifty dollars to be there for a day and a half feels like a lot of money to me, especially given everything that's going on that time of year with money being flying out of parents' wallets like incessantly. And I think there's, again, everything, their presentation was awesome and it's definitely was very mindful. But I also think there's a lot of spending money that's not like incorporated into that presentation, like the kids that want to go to the outlets to go shopping. Clearly they're going to need money for that, right? They're going out on, on these different excursions or on the, you know, going down the cog train. And now everyone wants a fifty dollar sweatshirt at the end to commemorate their. So I think that that cost was a great guesstimate. But I think that is a good likelihood that it's going to cost somebody more like eighty, fifty, you know, so. There's going to be more costs baked into it than just what was there. And I'm still really struggling with the like risk reward on that, like that's a lot of money to go away for a day and a half. And I think it, that is still a barrier to some of the accessibility for some of those kids. And I'm, I'm still struggling a little bit with that.
The only thing is I understand the accessibility, there, there is, you know, scholarships, you know, available to, to relieve that.
And I think one of our recommendations could be, like, if it's not obvious, I'm leaning towards approving this. And I think one of the recommendations that, or the points that I would impress to the class officers and WA staff is to think about how to reduce that stigma. Like is there an online forum or, or like, you know, to kind of even lower that bar of how to request
Yeah.
financial aid. They, they clearly have a strong commitment to offering it and planning for it. And so how do you make sure that students feel like they can ask for it?
It's accessible.
I would also look at the trend of those four classes that I called out. There's a significant amount of money left once these classes have gone.
Yeah.
You know, if some of that can be applied to reduce, you know, even, even more. So that, that's just something to think about.
Yeah, I just feel like balances are a moment in time. We don't know like what's coming and going, but
Right, but
I, for the cost, I, I totally agree that senior year, it's, it's not, it's not a nominal amount of money. It is a, a cost pressure that, that is being introduced. I think the spending money is, is built into all these forty trips. Well, except maybe the hiking overnight, although I don't, I don't know. So like, I, I don't want to penalize them for hidden costs or, or extra costs that are built into all of the student travel, right?
My one comment on the process, while I liked the, the presentation was great. You know, the cost is still significantly less than, right? Was the fact that it wasn't presented to the class first. So to me, just going forward, I would recommend that they have some buy-in from, from, and this would be for any class presenting something like that.
I, I appreciate that. I would say this is a unique circumstance because they had clearly been told no.
Right.
And so before having, getting anybody's hope up, they wanted to see what is something that the administration and the school committee might approve
Yeah.
before, you know, I mean, so I, I understand and I think they are very student centered. And so I think they are thinking about the, you know, the, the needs of their classmates. And I think they've been very responsive to that. I think this specific scenario, they knew that previous trips had been canceled and changed and not approved. And so they were trying to figure out, okay, what, what, what might we be able to do? So I think they were being very cautious before they got people's hopes up.
Do you know if they addressed or they have the ability to have staff coverage? Because I was also thinking that if the staff is going to be the chaperones, that you have freshman juniors, freshman sophomores and juniors that are still in the building that may be taking classes with those staff. Do we foresee any issues with being able to get twenty substitutes in the building to cover courses? It assumes that a lot of these people, they teach across grades.
And, and, but we also have some dedicated senior teachers as well too. So that was not a concern that was brought to us by WA. WA did not seem to think that there would be a concern to get the chaperones for.
I'm in favor of this trip because I feel that the students need to be having an experience together as a class that's really special and where they make memories. And I think that's an important part of being in school as well.
Yeah.
I would definitely agree with that, but I think it's hard to make those memories when you're balancing financial pressures, right? Maybe you want to buy that sweatshirt at the end, but you can't, and you laugh it off with your friends, but you know, you don't feel good about it. So I just, I, I agree with sort of Shayna's concerns around, you know, the cost piece. And I wonder if there's creative ways they can think about spreading the costs out or having students pay some at the beginning of the year to, you know,
They can do fundraising.
Sure, yeah.
And they can, they have scholarships.
And it's usually not like a deposit would usually be due in advance, like that you wouldn't actually be out of pocket in May for the, I assume the bulk of
They would want a commitment and as, as they have done with most trips, they do have sort of a payment schedule to break things down. That's not something that they normally present to us, but I think that's a good point.
And I don't, I don't want my support, and I appreciate what you said Lori, and I, I don't want my support to ignore or erase the very real cost pressures and even the social pressures that can come with an overnight class trip like this. But I think what I've taken away from the DC conversations and is to really think about, you know, those pressures can be very real and it doesn't mean that we can, we have to take the easy answer of not offering them. And so when something like this comes to us that, like I said, has kind of equity baked into it, I think that's, this is a great opportunity to give a pilot approval and reflect on it next spring and and it doesn't, it doesn't erase the chance that we can have as a committee to sort of still have that conversation about this, this sort of broader value of, of a class trip. I think we can still decide to have that. But that's where, that's how I'm landing on it.
And I would also just add that while I agree it's important to, to be able to have an opportunity to get away with a class. The class is not necessarily their safe space, but some of these other opportunities, you know, someone might choose to do German trip as opposed to the year-end trip. And, and that will still give them that community. And the, uh, you know, my experience on some of these is it builds character and real-life experience of being out there without mom and dad right there.
Right.
You know?
And one of the things we had heard too was that like, these are all great, like that those kind of club trips and, and foreign language trips are, are great if you're part of that club. And if you're not, is there an opportunity to have that type of experience elsewhere, so.
For any of these trips, what is the process for evaluating sort of the success of the trip? Like how does it make it back on this list, you know, the next year? What kind of review does it go through?
I think that's an excellent question because I think, I don't think there is a formal reflection process. I think that's something that we can kind of look into because one of the things we've seen is that there has been a change based on different circumstances, right? Okay, so COVID changed everything for us. And then we started being reflective as to what are we bringing back? And then there were some things that we're saying, it was really one of the, I think, I think a fair and major criticism of the DC conversation was that the reflection about concerns about the DC trip didn't happen right when they came back from DC. And so it was then when we were in the process of the next year, after it had come to the school committee and been, been approved, that then we were learning that there were concerns about it. So I think that's an excellent point that we should put back into this process. Because it's kind of that same idea, like as you're, you're having this great conversation about this potential new trip for the class of twenty-twenty-six. And all I keep thinking is, wow, for years there were just expectations that certain trips take place. And you think that there were concerns that might happen, that we would know about, that we just didn't necessarily always discuss and bring into the conversation. So I think to, to have a formal review of each trip, I think would be something that we should, we should put into the process.
And, and I think that could definitely play into like a review of the policy because one of the things, thank you for reminding me, was the DC conversation reminded us that the policy says they have to be brought to us the school year before.
Right.
So it's like these end of year trips, that opportunity for reflection is like crammed in here to be able to get back here for approval. And even when sometimes they were treated as like a placeholder that to start the approval process, maybe that conversation, that part of the conversation wasn't always happening like in the public packet. If somebody looked at the packet, they thought that's a guarantee, not a placeholder. Or they were voted on as not necessarily placeholder with the exception, expectation that they were happening, right?
We paid credence to grievances or concerns that were born after, you know? It is that pilot sort of process of
Right.
Building something new, so.
So does, is there any interest in pulling that trip out separately? Okay, I'll take a motion then to approve the slate of twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six field trips.
Second.
Oh, I, sorry, I needed, I worded it as a mo, needing a motion.
Oh, I would, I'll make a motion to approve these, the field trips.
Thanks.
And I will second.
Okay. Okay, any final commentary?
Can I just ask one question too? Because we did talk about line forty-two, the German piece. I mean, the
Pending administration.
But the other piece is, it kind of, kind of goes back to really what I think did upset some people with the DC decision. Is that you're approving these to happen, it doesn't necessarily mean that they'll all happen.
Because wasn't there one of the trips canceled this year?
We could cancel, we could cancel it, they could cancel it. It doesn't mean that, that might be another thing to remind like people.
You proved the planning of it.
Yes.
It depends on the interest level.
You're saying in theory?
In theory, yeah.
Right?
Yeah. Thank you for that commentary. Okay, ready?
Is it sort of with the understanding that we'll review the policy and look into?
Yeah, I think that's part of our discussion and as a member of the policy subcommittee, you can take, take that forward. Okay, so that was a motion and a second. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Moving on to superintendent evaluation. So for the benefit of the public and to give Catherine a minute to pull it up on the screen, this is a statewide, statewide, state-level practice of, that aligns with educator evaluations to provide a rubric with the goals and standards that align with Dr. Chu's self-evaluation and his goals from the fall. Every member individually completes an evaluation that are then funneled to one or two people that are one or two people that are putting that together, or one person or a subcommittee, I guess would be the correct way to say that. So that has happened over the last couple of weeks. I can't remember the meeting in April, I think, where you presented your self-evaluation. So all of that evidence was shared with the committee. Lori and I, I was stepping in for Sean and Mari as part of the superintendent evaluation subcommittee. So Lori and I met to, to carry on that torch and reviewed the process for compiling the composite. The superintendent does have one employer, that is the committee as a whole. And so that's why it's really important that a composite evaluation is one document that stands for that entire evaluation process. The way that we have sort of in Westford agreed on that best practice is measuring all the metrics to look for the, you know, the majority and what makes sense in the ratings as well as looking at the long, longer open-ended narrative commentary and weaving together that into a single voice while trying to represent any feedback that is, that is mentioned at least once, I'm sorry, more than once. So it has to be a theme or something that more than one person has said. So with that said, this is the vote up for tonight. The draft has been shared with you at the same time that it was made public in the packet. And this is open for edits. We can walk through this. Please feel free to share your sort of personal take as you went through the evaluation process. If you have edits that you didn't feel like your voice was, you can see your voice in certain areas. Please bring that up for, for consideration of the committee to consider and edit real time. And then we would take a vote accepting this evaluation and new members are welcome to abstain.
Or vote if you want.
And/or abstain, right?
Well, I mean.
I know what you're saying.
On the vote.
You meant on the vote.
Yeah. So I'm done talking. I'm going to take a sip of water while other people weigh in.
Is it good to note that it was based on six evaluations?
It was based on six evaluations. But it was all really clear and I think what's really important is there was a unanimous overall rating for proficient. So I, I don't think, I think a lot of this aligns with the self-evaluation. You know, the goals were met, significant progress had met. I guess I'll keep talking. The standards were all proficient and then that really important, you know, overall is, is also proficient. And while comments are optional, if you rate proficient, I doubt that we would ever take, take, take that up. You know, I think this sort of summary commentary here is, tries to capture what's cap, what's written elsewhere in all of the standards and speaks to the important work that we all know was happening this year with these really important foundational goals that align with the S-DIP, that create some momentum in a lot of these multi-year initiatives, right? And really important work that align with our standards and our goals.
I will say that this gave me a little bit of appreciation to our staff of how they're having to fill out report cards and, and progress reports, you know.
And their own evaluation.
Yeah, but, but the, the idea of, you know, when I grew up, you know, it was numeric and it numeric meant letter, right? And I, I would love to say exceeds on some things, but I, I know I personally hold a very high level for exceeds, right? Even for myself in evaluation.
And really when MA, when MASC trains this, they, they impress upon that. Exceeds expectations is, like proficient is a.
I forget how they word it.
The gold standard.
Yes, thank you. It's a rigorous expected level of performance. It is not just ho-hum.
Yeah.
Right.
That's what they tell educators as well.
And exceeded is like, you know.
National leader.
Yes, setting a precedent region or statewide, so.
Right.
You know.
I just want to kind of set that, that level of expectation in anyone that's looking at this for the first time as well.
Great comment, thank you.
Met is, is a very good.
Right. Cause these are not small goals.
No, some of them are multi-year.
Right.
Yeah.
Did anyone feel like edits were necessary in the long form narrative parts? Lori and I, like I took a stab at drafting it. Lori gave a read over and then it went to you. So feel free to make suggestions or I'll take a motion. Any, sorry, anything you'd like to add?
No, I, I appreciate that. I recognize the time and effort that goes into it, you know? I appreciate that you appreciate the time and effort that goes into preparing all that information for you and to have everybody do their own thing and then try to put it together. I also know how difficult that is, so I appreciate Valerie and Lori, what you did to do that. And, you know, I, I do feel like it's, it's on the same page as the self-evaluation. So I mean, I feel like we're all speaking the same language, which is.
I feel like the process as well, you know, from year one to where we are today is like a well-oiled machine. I think we've really established, you know, a really good, solid process and.
It still remains.
I hope you, you find it worthwhile in, in that sense.
I, I find, oh, I find the goal setting worthwhile, the evaluation, to be honest with you.
I know.
But that's, it is, it is, that's a piece of it, right?
Yeah.
But it's, it's one of those things where explaining this to most anybody, there are very few people who have their evaluation discussed publicly.
Sure.
Right?
A town manager doesn't even have.
Right. And so I just feel like it's, I'm just glad that it, so far it's never been contentious, right? So I'm like, I'm glad with that.
I mean, there, I just want to point the public to like, there are a couple of things mentioned for, you know, suggestions for future goals or areas of opportunity. It's not just a glowing rubber stamp, you know? There, there is work identified as suggestions.
And to that end, it has, that's kind of what Catherine's saying is like, we've been, I think we've been using it effectively, right? So then we're like, okay, well, let's look at that. And when we, when we talk about the goals next year or just in a couple of months, you know, we'll be looking to see, okay, are there things that, that we can, that we can continue to improve upon? And I truly believe that being a reflective practitioner is important. And so I want to model that for everybody, right? Model that for our entire staff as well.
And I would hope that if we ever reach a point that it was going to be contentious, you would know it's coming because we're having those discussions.
Right, right. There should be no surprises.
Yeah, exactly.
All right. Well, in order to move us along.
Yes.
I will make a motion to approve the composite evaluation for, does it say, oh, FY25 for Dr. Chris Chu.
Second.
Any last commentary?
Well done. Another go to here.
And to all of staff.
Yeah.
That contribute to behind you.
That's the other piece. It's the district, right? We talked about it being connected to the S-DIP and I mean, that might be another conversation we have like as we move forward. Like, do all these things need to be separate or are there ways to?
Yeah.
Stream them, yeah.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, thanks.
I'm glad they didn't go with opposed.
I thought about it.
I saw you, you were thinking, you were like.
I hope you were paying attention because next May it's, you're in there.
That's right.
I'll be ready.
Okay, next is a quick zip through our own goals. They also should not be a surprise, but open to feedback. I take a, as has been our practice, I take a stab at drafting this presentation and a self-reflection. But they align pretty neatly with super technicals and other work that we've heard from in our SIPs in the last couple of weeks. Go ahead. So you are, you are all painfully aware of how many executive session minutes we have released this year. I am super duper proud of us. We almost in our, my, I, I'll take ownership for this. In my focus on the backlog, I have sort of neglected that first vote on recent ones. So I want to start off next year really kind of catching up on that first and then working back, continuing to. Continuing to work on the backlog, cause as you'll notice, we're about to start FY26 and yet we still just tied up FY21. So it's like one, one step forward. There, I, I think our school committee page, committee page on the district website looks, looks a lot refreshed. We can think about over the summer, maybe it's a topic for a retreat, like what topics to update on there. You know, I, I really was proud that we had that in time for the start time information for families. And we can think about how to balance that, the, the bandwidth of updating with what topics make sense to the public that might find their way, looking at it, find their, find their way to the page.
Can I mention something right here, just as we're talking website? The Civics Plus website that it, we're currently, that we currently use, some aspect of it, the, the technology that they use is going away. And so we've actually been, Kathy and Courtney and I, we've met with three different companies to look at what another website might look like. So chances are we're, I mean, we are going to have something. It's going to look different because what we currently have is going away. So, so just, that, that's going to actually support the content and different things that you're.
Okay, great. Let's just keep flying through these. Goal two was financial related policies. Obviously the biggest star of the show here is our NGFG. We, I had a bold vision of us tackling the 3000 series policies in the spring. But, but the conversation did trigger that facilities fee update, so I think that's good. And I think we're going to start the fall knowing sort of a priority basis of which ones to focus on first. So still good work, but not met.
Policies are not easy.
Yeah. Goal three, the master plan work obviously aligns with Dr. Chu's goals, the S-DIP. So the start time subcommittee presenting a recommendation, collaborating with the Robinson School Building Committee and creating that space usage analysis that you are all very aware of. And that's it. We only gave ourselves three goals, which I think is right. So for new members and for anyone in the public watching, we will sort of marinate on that and make proposals for next year's goals in the next couple of weeks and bring back a proposed set of goals when we start again in August.
Can I ask you a question on the process here? Some of these things are sort of related to the public's interpretation of how well they went, right? Like is it a user-friendly website or things like that? Just curious if we solicited any public feedback on any of the goals.
I have not solicited any public feedback, but I think that's a great recommendation moving forward. Yep. Anything else on there? Sorry, I didn't turn to commentary. Okay. Next up is school committee organization. So as my last act, so for anyone in the public watching, we have, we do have a policy that recommends or dictates, I guess, that a chair is, serves as chair for two consecutive years before a change. Not before a change and then a change must happen, I guess would be the right way to say that.
The term limit.
A term limit, thank you. So before we go through the chair, vice chair, secretary nomination process, I want to first point everybody to the subcommittee assignments. So, cause that falls under our organization. So a lot of improvements, I think, as part of our onboarding for two new members. I've updated this list to have meeting schedules, day and evening, when the committee, subcommittee or liaison's roles meet virtual or in person or both and an overview, a high level description or purpose. So it's all kind of in one place and, and is in our packet for the public to see, you know, what, what we spend our time on in between these Monday night meetings or Tuesday, if there's a holiday. So there is a lot here. I, I really try to be thoughtful about balancing people's bandwidth with their interest level, with their.
Skills.
Skills and with their eagerness to take on a lot in their new first year.
I don't know why you're looking at me.
I'm looking in that direction. And so I, I do feel good about this. I think there's a lot of continuity where continuity matters. There's fresh takes where that is helpful. And that's, any, any final tweaks to be made?
I'm happy. I know you have the, the staff DEI.
Yeah, I had a TBD until we figure that out.
But I'm happy to take that liaison again.
Okay.
Once we figure it out.
Yep. And I have a TBD for calendar committee, just to kind of see how everyone feels about their bandwidth in the fall. And we want, it usually makes sense to have some overlap with negotiations, so.
Negotiations, yeah.
That's pretty much it. All good? So I think we vote to accept our subcommittee assignments and liaisons?
I don't think. As well. Doesn't hurt.
No, it doesn't hurt.
Okay, great. Looking for a motion on the subcommittee assignments for 2025, 2026. Any last thoughts? Okay, all in favor? Great. Thank you. Okay. So now we hand this over to Dr. Chu.
Yes, so because of this policy, we need to look to establish a change in leadership on the committee. I would like to say you have done a phenomenal job for two years, seeing as how, I mean, you became the chair when we were trying to deal with an override and then we moved right into a building committee and all of the different aspects of that. And so I personally appreciate all of your leadership and your collaboration. And I think you've done a great job for the, well, for everybody, for this committee and for the staff and students. But that being said, I would ask if there is a nomination and/or a volunteer to be considered for chair for the next, well, the, the term would be for the next two years. But we just do it for one year at a time. It just means that it has to change every two years.
I think we do it one year at a time and then can always.
Right. So for the, so for the 25, well, for the, for the 25, 26 school year, I'm looking for a motion, recommendation.
Motion to change the law, the policy.
On the tenure limit.
Is that on the table?
No second.
And suspend us.
We could, but I think Valerie deserves a break. Everything she does.
Very valid.
I would like.
One year break.
I would like to nominate Catherine. She has served as vice chair for two years and seen a lot of the, you know, one of the things we've talked about over the last two years really has been, how do you make these roles more accessible to working families or to just anyone in the community that may not have as much bandwidth? And I think we've made some really thoughtful changes, but there is still some work that happens during the workday to align with staff. And so Catherine has seen, you know, that role as vice chair for the last two years and I think she will make an excellent chair. So I'll make that nomination.
Second, okay. Any discussion?
This is where it all goes downhill.
I guess I would have to say, would you accept that?
I would accept it, yes.
All in favor?
Great.
With that, I will turn it over to the chair.
Yep.
Catherine, clear.
Oh man, that's strange. Well, thank you very much. And I just want to reiterate as well, I, I think Valerie, you have been a fantastic chair the last two years. I think your communication with the rest of the school committee and engagement and, and really. The public, but you know, that's, that's a side, the, the school committee aspect is something the public doesn't see. And I think it's important to acknowledge that. You know, I know they're all on Facebook following you. But that other side of that school committee side is that, you know, so much happens behind, behind the scenes. There's so many meetings and I think you really are thoughtful and work hard to keep us all informed and to keep some guardrails on us, guide rails, I should say, maybe, maybe guardrails. And so it's been very much appreciated and I don't even anticipate trying to follow your act, but we'll, you know, buckle up and we'll survive.
Just wanted to make me Catherine's problem, all my SOSs of questions that I'm sending your way.
Voice memo, so go for Shayna anytime.
I'm going to send you the first voice memo. You better, you better watch out.
Okay, so with that, I, I am going to open up the floor and look for nominations for our vice chair for school committee for the FY26 school year.
Well, since Valerie has so much experience, I think we should nominate her for vice chair. Well, since Valerie has so much experience, I think we should nominate her for vice chair.
And I would second that, if anybody else wants to.
No.
I, I am willing, but I just want to make sure that the public at least sees a discussion that, you know, there, there are rules, like we were just saying, that, that do take place during the workday. And I think vice chair is a great exposure to, to, like, the leadership of chair, and I see potential in many of our committee members. So I think it's just like a kind of transition year.
Yeah, it, yeah, this, this year in particular, so.
But I, I'm willing and happy to.
I delegate really well, don't worry, Valerie.
Not to me.
So do you accept the nomination then, Valerie?
Yes, I am willing.
Okay. And so, motion to.
Who's moved and seconded?
Oh, see, I'm already failing, there we go. It's after nine o'clock, so, so, we take a vote? All in favor? There we go. Unanimous, well. And so then our next role that I think we have to look at filling and is the role of our secretary clerk. It's always, Laurie, you've, you've done a great job. It's often a baptism of fire coming in, figuring out how the minutes work, follow, you know, not just reviewing our minutes as they come in from our Monday meetings, but any executive minutes that either need writing or reviewing and keeping us on track like that. So, thank you, Laurie, for, for your work this year.
There is more to it than people think.
Yeah. But I will accept any nominations for the role of secretary for the FY25 school year.
I would nominate Lori to continue. As you've started, started to hit your stride.
Second. Seconded. Yeah, I think that's great, some continuity, especially as we're still in that backlog with executive sessions is helpful, and so.
Well, before she changes her mind.
Yeah. It's not that bad. I did it for two years too, Laurie, you're good.
Yeah. We want to get, we don't want to burn anyone out when they first get here, you know.
And so, Laurie, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So all in favor to appoint Laurie as our secretary for the next school year? There we go.
Am I supposed to vote?
You can go for it, just to give yourself a unanimous. Let's, yeah, let's put it down. Okay, and so that's us all set for the next year. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a point of order? Do we need to have a vote, and it may not be, may not be able to tonight, but to approve Catherine to be the signer of warrants now? Because I think it had to be a person, not a position.
Didn't we keep it in the policy that it was the chair?
We named it as chair, but at the charting the course that Tom and I and Jess were at, they actually said.
It should be a name.
That it should be a name, not a position.
Okay.
So, we may not be able to do it today because it's not on the agenda, but, you know, it's just something that we need to.
We could add it to, as a quick business item to our retreat.
Yep.
It, I, I would, I, I would disagree with you. You say that it's not on the agenda, but it says, "School committee organization, vote expected", and you did just change the chair, so.
Yeah.
There, you didn't say exactly what votes would be taken, you're talking about your organization, and that is very much an organizational thing. So rather than waiting till the 23rd, if you're comfortable doing it.
Oh, yeah.
It meets the.
The agenda.
It meets the agenda, yeah.
Very true.
So then I would make a motion to have Catherine be the authorized signer for the school committee on warrants.
Second.
All in favor? There we go. Good call, Tom.
Okay.
Yeah, good call.
Thank you for thinking of that.
You didn't want to keep doing it for the.
It's really easy now. It's like e-sign on Adobe, thank you, Kathy.
Awesome.
Really great.
Okay. So, our last item on the agenda for this evening is a new job description on the educational support professionals. Courtney?
So, as a result of the last negotiations with the educational support professionals, which is also known as Unit E, we did collectively decide that we would update the job description for these individuals. Jessica asked a great question this weekend of when was the last time this was updated? And, you know, what are the major changes? Well, there are just a lot of changes to really highlight everything. It was a job description that had been developed in 2016. At the time, our ESPs were known as teaching assistants, and so some of the things that you'll notice is that we kind of brought it into the format that we've been using all year as far as our job descriptions, kind of having the organizational scope, the position responsibilities, and any kind of job qualifications or physical demands that are necessary. We kept, although our, we have several different types of ESPs, they're called out within the same job description. So, I think that this kind of is cohesive enough to be able to say, this is in general, what an educational support professional does and is expected to do for the district, and then where there are differences with the classroom ESP, which right now take place at the preschool or kindergarten level, or a library media ESP, or the special education ESP. Those types of responsibilities are called out a little bit further under their job descriptions.
For the classroom, the library media, and the special ed, are they responsible for everything above, plus those?
Correct.
So the only suggestion I had, just, again, things are in my little house, is maybe just having a, a line before those three that says something like, in addition to the responsibilities listed above, the, you know, so then the, in addition to the, to the core ESP responsibilities, these specialized ESPs have, have additional duties as described below. So it's stating that they're responsible for everything above, and that you're calling them out as three specialized, like, subcategories. So I would just maybe have like one transition line there that just says, like, you're responsible for everything that's listed above, and then you have these specialized based on your.
Or would, like, you may be responsible, does that, would that make a difference? Because I don't, you know, sometimes.
It depends, how, how might you post? Would you be specifying classroom ESP, special, yeah, SESP?
Right, so when we do, when we do post, we don't necessarily post the job description.
Right.
Because there could be very unique circumstances of that position that we're hiring, so we're trying to, you know, be as clear and concise. One other thing that I should have mentioned was this was a joint effort with WEA Consult, so we did the shell of it, and then we've all added it over to WEA for their feedback, which thankfully, they just had a couple little tweaks to it, and so they are in agreement to that as well. But Shayna, I don't see any, it certainly implied, so I think that that's just adding a little bit more clarity.
Yeah.
And your words were quite nice, if you don't mind just emailing that to me.
Two, two iterations, so that's why I got a little confused with my notes I wrote down here, but.
Implied is never good. When we deal with contracts.
I just appreciate the district and WEA's clarity on this. I think it's really vital for our parents and community members to understand all the responsibilities, and there are many that our ESPs play in the district and how valuable they are, so. Thank you for bringing that.
So we'll be voting on this.
Well, I, I mean, typically, I mean, our practice has been that something comes up on an agenda and is a vote on the sec, at the next, at a second meeting. You know, I think it could be considered a specific instance where the, this was such a collaborative, joint effort with WEA, who would be the other major stakeholder, that, that they have contributed to this product. And I, I know there, I'm sure there are listings that are, that are waiting or, or plan to go up soon.
Again, it doesn't impact the postings specifically.
Okay, okay. Do you have a recommendation or a preference?
If you would want to waive a second reading, then we could take a vote tonight, and that would be great. We do have one more job description to bring, and I anticipate doing that at the early onset of next year, and that's the job descriptions for the administrative assistants, which is Unit C. And, and we also agreed to update the job description for them as well.
So, do we, sorry, this is me completely blanking on the calendar at this point. Do we have another regular business meeting before next school year?
No.
Then I would, I would be in favor of voting for this because.
You mean, you mean absent the retreat?
Yes, yes, a regular business meeting.
A recorded business.
I, I would be in favor of bringing this to a vote for the simple fact of then we go into the school year fresh with, with everyone knowing their responsibility.
Yeah.
And any other?
Question, though, is that, are some of these same votes expected? Is that a courtesy or a requirement?
It's a courtesy. Yep. And, and I think, oh, I just had a thought, it, just that it's powerful, that it's coming jointly. And I think that, that, that is a bit unique. You know, usually the, the cadence of it is to allow for, you know, additional feedback, but when we, when we know it came through a vetted process, yeah.
And be ready for the summer. I mean, there's, right, it's gonna be posting.
I don't want to rush anyone, right? So if.
Motion to approve the educational support professional job description with the amended inclusion of that line. Thank you to Shayna.
Second.
All in favor? There you go. And so I will take now a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Good night.